No, not exactly. I remember I was taking you had that big grade to the driveway. We took that grade out and we put, we teed in there. That line down here is probably at least ten foot deep. Maybe a little deeper than that because I remember practically maybe 12. So I don't know how much angle we had to do. But we actually, we actually got an old neighbor's line out to fix that line. But outside they actually broke their line.
I could have done that.
I could have maybe used the line.
My curtain.
Yeah.
We come out of that line and we link it up there and come down like your house goes. It catches basically like a straight. Well. Water goes from your house.
Yeah, yeah.
But we didn't, we didn't, we didn't change. No, the crawler should be working. I do not remember the angle capping. I know it's down there, but I don't remember how deep. Everybody ready when we get started here?
Mary Jane.
Here.
Sasha.
Here.
Theresa.
Here.
Kathy.
Yes, here.
That's clear. A little bit of a hort, but that's all right. Do you have a motion to accept the minutes of the August meeting, please?
So many.
Roll call, please.
Okay.
Yes.
Sasha.
Yes.
Theresa.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes, here. That's clear. A little bit of a hort, but that's all right. Do you have a motion to accept the minutes of the August meeting, please?
So many.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Sasha.
Yes.
Theresa.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes. We need a motion to approve the operating transfer to the police fund, please. Motion made.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Sasha.
Yes.
Theresa.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes. We need a motion to approve the grant matching transfer to the street department fund, please. Motion made.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Sasha.
Yes.
Theresa.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Phil.
Susan does not here. Mr. Moran, do you have something for council tonight?
Uh, yes, good. Come up here. Okay, John Rice on the Hudson Street. I lived there 22 years in Bay Harbor. I'd like to talk to council about a hole they fixed in front of the house. My, I mean, they did a pretty good job. He's, uh, some barriers he's put around it. Cracks were cut out. And, uh, we got some logs laying in the same ditch down there on White Water Avenue. But we had heavy rain. We had a problem. I believe council could have made aware of this. Down by Robbie's garage and Donna's house. Glass, glass by right there. And I'd like to know what the code is on the lot of grass in the street.
There is an ordinance.
You have?
I can't name it. I mean, I can't, we're bored. It's just, it's never been enforced, so, um... And I don't know exactly who or how. It's gonna be enforced because people just keep doing it more and more all the time. You find it. Well, we gotta see them doing it first.
I need big pictures because seeing them do it, right?
Well, yeah, I don't really know who is in charge of that other than I am.
Sanitation.
Well.
What else do you have?
Well, I have some pictures I'd like to show you. This is what I'm talking about.
Well, I've seen it myself.
Oh, have you really? You haven't seen these?
No, I haven't seen these, but...
And, uh, Shanks did still need cleaning. He passed them around. You know, it's ridiculous. I talked to the police officer about getting Robbie quick doing it on my street. He said he hit my house with rocks in the debris. And I had to replace a tire because of rain and the trash. And it should be required to send an hour, you know, and be blowed off. That just makes the town look trashy. And there's several unsafe buildings that are unattended in different alleys around town. Where somebody fall down, you got doors open on them.
Yeah.
Kids can walk in and get hurt. Same with Shanks did. She got an ordinance on obnoxious plans. I've got alleys she's like crazy. You've got Shanks did, she's gone now for 17 years. Didn't have it cleaned it. And they have an ordinance.
Just been clean since 99.
17 years? What? It's up to the property owner.
Save this laws to the county.
The county says laws to the homeowner.
Anything else?
John, I see these pictures here. Was that grass swept up? Do you have pictures of an hour later?
No, it wasn't swept up. It was blown off by cars.
Two foot?
Blown off by cars, blown over by cars.
Because I know when we mow, it's in the street, but then we clean it out.
Yeah, I blow, I blow mine.
Pass, blow back down.
I have a multiple blade on mine, so you know where mine gets in the street.
Those pictures, no claim at all.
I mean, I can go around and take pictures all I want. People blow grass in the street. That's just by, just making the bill look trashy. If you see any help on the forces under the pictures, I'll take pictures all day long. I've got my leg fixed now. My house has been there for 68 years. I don't have a curb in front of it. It's causing debris to build up around the entrance of my driveway above Scheidens driveway. Where the water runs down the hill and in front of the sidewalk stands two inches. There's never been curbs. I fell last month after I got my leg fixed and went down that hill. Needs to have some sidewalks put on. It's a street that's never finished. So I don't know where you guys can come up with the money for that. I mean, we got a golf cart interstate up here between Camp Brown and Carrot House. You say there's no golf carts. I've caused several pictures of that. It's some reason. Spent 15,000 on that. There's nothing on Hudson Street.
I'm sorry, I don't know what you're talking about.
Little interstate you put through the golf cart.
You're talking about sidewalks.
Sidewalks, yeah. We don't have any on Hudson Street from the bridge up. Being a fault. My mother fell and broke her arm. This look gave her back. Had concussion. Because she rolled down that hill because of no sidewalks. That's why she's where she's at now.
I'm sorry, I don't have any sidewalks on one street either. Not my house.
I heard a lot of places.
There are a lot of places that don't.
They got water running down there. I got sidewalks running down.
Get the water directed into the drains a little better. I clean the drains down there.
There's a lot of things need fixed in town and it still comes down to having the money to take care of it.
And if Shanks ditch belongs to the county, then it's up to the county to enforce.
Yeah, when the county, when the county's money slowed down, they said it's our problem. And then it goes back to the homeowner's problem. So it's been an ongoing contest for years and years.
Right. And most of them are rentals. Put it on the homeowner to get cleaned. He's making money. We've written out the house. It needs to be cleaned before we have a flood like we did 17 years ago. I know this lady called several times about the logs that were laying there blocking Shanks ditch. And if we have a flood, that's really just fault for not cleaning it up.
Yes, fault. I'm sorry.
Donna, which is sister.
Oh, okay. Well, I didn't.
She called the sheriff's office. She's called everybody. And the logs are still laying there.
The logs are on his property.
They're in the creek. We don't know.
Well, that was creek. The creek that's in people's property, that border of people's property are their responsibility to keep clean. So if there's logs in Mr. Jones's property, then Mr. Jones needs to keep his, his.
Well, all of them houses is go. They're rentals. Cars got, got apartments are making money off of it. So split the fine and they'll get it cleaned. There's trash and debris in there that you people never even stop to go down and look. The town has been spraying with weed killer. So if you've been spraying with weed killer, maybe you ought to go ahead and clean it and assess the property.
But it's not our place to clean it, John.
Well, whose place is it?
The property owner.
Then find him.
Find him? Do you have to have an ordinance to find him?
We have an ordinance.
We have an ordinance, but we don't have an ordinance against cleaning this house by law.
Property line, property line. That's part of their property.
Only if they're caught throwing trash into the creek.
And it's in the creek. Could have come a mile away and got left there by the last rain that passed through.
No, there's diapers down there, been down there. I talked to her years ago about the diapers slayed down there when people throw the trash out.
You have anything else, John?
Yeah. Don't worry about it. Managers used located in the yard areas within the village such as sheds, barns, garage, bins, and the like shall be maintained in good repair in accordance with other provisions of this code. Having regard to foundations, roofs, and exterior services. Any broken, rusted, deteriorated fence, yard, closures, other structures, devices located in the yard area. Then the village shall be repaired or removed. Now, why haven't you done anything about it?
What exactly are you?
Top of the Shanks ditch. It's supposed to be cleaned so water can run through it. A lot of people got put in a flood though because they remapped for some reason.
County did that and have nothing to do with the repairs?
Well, like I say, it needs cleaned. I don't care how it gets cleaned.
Well, that's the property owner's cleaning.
That's fine.
You guys are in there. No, it's up to the property owner.
You are, of course, your ordinance.
I live on St. Ditch and I clean mine.
Yeah, I clean mine. I don't clean anybody else's.
You clean yours out. Just because your neighbor doesn't.
I clean for her. It's full of obnoxious animals. There's scum that move in that thing. Ticks and all that stuff.
Now, we can't keep the animals and the ticks out.
In your ordinance, that's part of your ordinance, buddy.
Mother nature.
It's your right to hear.
Mother nature can, can do just about whatever someone wants.
Mother nature's gonna flood the town, is what's happening.
Well, then that's something we'll have to talk to mother nature about.
Yeah, well, I know that anywhere down here tonight. Yeah, you've got it right here in your, your ordinance. It should be taken care of. You ought to get it taken care of. You sent somebody. I left it here last month. I find $500. They need to get property going on Pearl Street.
I'm not aware of that.
Uh, it's told me by the postman that some lady had a little bit of weed sprout and she got it better. It can get cleaned up. It should be $500. It needs cleaned up. Not set to argue about it. Clean it up. Find them. If they have to shell out money, they'll get it cleaned up.
We're not allowed to find the court finding.
Well, send it to the court.
We do.
Okay, now, what do we have to do to even go on and up that person's property? Aren't there steps?
We gotta get permission from them or we have to go through the court system?
Of course. They're in your entire yard area extending up to including the lot line. All directions shall be in compliance with definitions of this ordinance. It's the owner's responsibility. If they don't do it, then the town can go in and do it.
There's steps we go through and they have, they're have been before they get to court.
They should all have, they all should have inserted papers long time ago and put on notice.
Most of them have. There's a process that we go through and right now because of changes, a lot of that hasn't been done. And I have, I am behind. I had surgery a couple of weeks ago. And I haven't rechecked on some of the letters that I sent out.
Oh, here's the thing.
Because I haven't had the time and I wasn't able to do it.
And when you did and we went to court, what happened?
The court fined them, but they did not make them clean the property.
But they make them clean up the mess.
Well, they should be fined for every day since they went to court.
That's not up to me. We're not allowed to find, John. You have to take them to court.
It's up to the court system. The court system is debating about it. There's not much we can do if they don't enforce the ordinance force. We can't do it on our own.
Oh, they wants their money, but they never bothered to make them clean up the property.
Well, the council needs to get with the court and do something about it. Or do it. They'll just put it on their taxes.
Well, good luck doing that. Do you think I haven't tried?
Oh, I imagine you haven't tried.
Yes, I have.
You just go in there and start doing it.
I gotta have some backing to do it. And I don't back. When the court doesn't back you, you don't have any place to go.
Well, you got no problem with going out and spraying weed killer on it.
I didn't spray weed killer. Didn't even know the weed killer was being sprayed. This is just one circle all the time.
This has been going on for years. It's not gonna be solved here tonight. We've had this discussion over and over and over and over about St. Ditch. And it's, St. Ditch is what it is. Because it used to be to the counties and when the county got short of money, they tried to go over us. So it's an ongoing battle. Anything else, Mr. Moran?
Not right now.
Thank you. We'll take under advisement.
Okay, I'll be back next month.
John Bell.
How are you folks this evening?
Good.
I'm doing well. I wanted to apologize to you that I wasn't able to, to make it last month. We had several things go on in the early part of August and I just wasn't able to get out here at that point. So I wanted to come out this month and talk to you because I've, at this point, met with the village of Lewisburg, the village of Grattis, the village of Camden. They're all in agreement that it's something that they'd like to do. But they're not making the kind of progress that they need to be making with it at this point. So there's a couple of options for you guys. We had talked before and you had talked as a council that you may move forward just as an individual group. Or you also, because you don't renew until May of next year, you have the option to, to sit and wait and see if we, if we get a favorable response from the other villages to come together and have several thousand meters go together at once for pricing. And what I will tell you is I wanted to give you an update. I have pricing today that is roughly 17 and a half percent cheaper than, than what your, your previous or your existing, your existing aggregation is presently. So as of right now, the, the daily manufacturing cost of electricity, when I, when I came to you the last time, it was at about 2.6 cents per kilowatt hour. Today it was at 2.4 cents per kilowatt hour. However, that's the manufacturer's cost to the companies that, that supply. However, since, since we met last, there have been some public utility and FERC charges that have been passed through to the suppliers and so those charges get passed through in the way they develop their pricing. So I had hoped that my pricing would come in to you guys somewhere in the 4.9 to 5.2 range, which is where we were at when we did Bell Fountain. My pricing to you right now is gonna come in at about 5.65 and presently at 6.83 as a village.
Well, these are residential.
Now, these are in, in an aggregation in the state of Ohio. Your small business owner and your annual residential meters would all qualify for this if they didn't have something in place already that, that they were obligated to for time.
So in other words, if we, if council agrees to go with you, then when our, this is the contract is up, you will, between now and then, you'll start holding meetings for the public whether they want, whether they want in or whether they want out.
Well, the way that your opt-in and your opt-out works and, and we'll surely do some, some town hall type deals with your people to give them some information. If that's something that you want to do, I'm all for that. However, the way that, that your aggregation plan works with the state of Ohio is your opt-out plan. And the last time, everybody but 225 of your meters opted out. So I would say this time with the pricing like it is, you'll, you'll have a better response to it this time because it is more in line with how the, and I say more in line, as of right now, this is six, eight months of, of advanced pricing. But it's, it's cheaper than, than they could go online today and buy the, the product for, if, if they went on there today. And so, as I told you all before, there's, we're not experiencing the same kind of peaks out of the hurricane season that we have in the past because of the distribution of natural gas across the country and how it's produced. But in the past, when we had hurricanes like the ones that just came in, the natural gas would go from two or three dollars per million cubic feet up to $18 per million cubic feet. Actually, between 14 and 18. So we're going to experience some spikes in the natural gas as a commodity, but it won't be as... The economists are saying it's not going to be as intense as it's been in the past because of the distribution of production now. So by the time we get out to May, that 5.65 percent rate may look even more attractive at that point based on what they could, what they could go to suppliers and purchase it for themselves. So I'm, I kind of, I wanna be careful about it because I don't have a crystal ball, but I feel like we're probably gonna have a considerable amount more response this time than you guys had last time when this thing got priced. Because at that point, wholesale market was cheaper than it is now. And so they would have been able to go out there and procure rates that were considerably favorable to the existing rate. Now it's gonna be more commensurate. It's most likely if this thing's gonna be two to three tenths of, of a penny cheaper than they could go out and get for themselves at this point by the time May gets here. So what happens in that is if, if we realize the almost 7 million kilowatt hours of electric that this village actually uses, if we, if we begin to grow that aggregation, that price is gonna get better every time we do it, even if you guys just choose to continue to stay.
Well, this is 5.65. Is it per kilowatt or is it per cubic foot of gas?
No, no, that's per kilowatt hour of electricity. And presently you're at 6.83.
Were you saying something about cubic feet of gas in that same conversation?
Well...
What, we were talking about apples to apples or what we were really talking about?
Just, just to go back, as part of my process with you folks, I, I introduced to you way back in the beginning that natural gas is a driving force in electric pricing. I apologize that I didn't preface with that again. But the natural gas, as it goes up in price, it drives the electric price up because the people who are manufacturing electric now are using so much natural gas in the process of making the electric. When you get west of the Mississippi, as much as 56% of, of the ingredients that go into the production of your electric are natural gas. Because those states don't have as much coal as we have out this way and we are still using coal. But we've even surpassed coal with, with natural gases as an ingredient on this side as well now. So that was why I made the comment about natural gas.
Because I know the nat, the natural gas that we know it today isn't on aggregation. They like it.
It is not on aggregation. It is something that I would, I would consider if I were y'all. That it's another one of those areas where bought in, in aggregate, you can reduce the pricing for the citizens here. And I just haven't pursued it yet as pricing. But I will and come back to you and talk to you about it. I know that today I spoke with the village administrator for the village of Arcanum and they have their own utility that, that's a co-op type of utility. But they, they don't do natural gas. And he even said to me today, he said, you know, I'd like to look at the natural gas because it's also another place where we could try to be effective for our citizens.
So tonight, can you come to council tonight to lock in for the 5.65 that will go into effect at the end of our contract in May of next year? And then in between then, we'll have to educate the people, the residents of the village as to whether they want to opt-in or opt-out.
The same way we did with...
The problem with that is what, you know, a lot of people get that stuff in the mail. Looks like number 13. He goes to 13. The only thing that we have to be kind of careful is that if they don't opt-out, a lot of places are automatically in.
Right. If they don't opt-out, they are automatically in it.
That would be the case here.
And it'll be the case here because of the type that you, you chose. Instead of opt-in, you, you guys chose an opt-out. And, and your aggregation on file with public utility.
But the six months to give us time to educate the community is what's about to take place at May next year.
Yeah, what you'll, what you'll be looking at is the same thing that happened before. Once you chose a supplier.
Right.
There was a letter that went out to, to everybody on the list. And, and those people that were on the list got the option to opt-out if they wanted to. But as long as my company and the supplier doesn't have any issues with, with us holding, you know, town halls that, that give people the opportunity to ask questions and to talk about it, I, I surely have no problem with that. I think you know that from, from dealing with me on, on other things. I'm not here necessarily to lock you in. You guys have the option to lock in if you want. But I wanted to give you all the information that I had and let you guys decide as a council if, if that's a rate you want to try and lock in at this point. Or if you, if you want to take your chances against the next six months and see what, what the, what the rate structure has become in the marketplace. I don't have the crystal ball. But this thing has been, this, this wholesale market has been inching up and then it moved back. But then the PUCO and the FERC, which is a, a federal function, assessed some more pass-through charges that come to the companies like mine. And the companies, I shouldn't say companies like mine because I'm just a broker. But the pass-through charges come to those suppliers and when they do, they're gonna pass them through to the end user every time.
It's your feeling that, and in Lewisburg, they're not gonna be ready?
It's my feeling that, that they're very interested in this. That they have interest in it, but because they've never participated in it. And our county is, is, even at our county level, I've spent some time with Chris Day and some time with Rodney Creach. I have semi-friendly relationships with those guys and we've spent some time talking about this. And even at that level, our county doesn't have the level of education about what they did with this aggregation at this point to, to be sure that they can put it all on a blanket underneath their aggregation. See, right now they have, they have one supplier for Jackson Township. And I think there's one other township that has aggregation as well. With, with that county-wide aggregation, when they set us up to be an aggregate county, every village in the county can have an aggregation under their umbrella. And the PUCO allows it. But because it was the first time they've ever done it, their level of education is, oh my gosh, we've gotta have our legal department check and see where we're at on this subject.
Now, the county went with Palmer's originally and then we broke away from the county and went with, uh... EPL Energy.
Yeah, Palmer's is a, is a brokerage company as well that, that is affiliated with the, the County Commissioners Association for the state of Ohio. And quite frankly, they've, they've done a very good job making the county commissioners across the state believe that they have some kind of partnership. Because the people that you talk to use that word who, who deal with Palmer's. But I'm not 100% certain that they have put fair market competition to the test with Palmer's.
Right.
And that's probably what you guys found when you, when you dealt with that before. And I'm in the process of trying to make our county put Palmer's to the fair market test. Because we're the largest broker of electric and gas in North America. Independent broker. And we get better pricing than anybody does including Palmer's. So as I say that, it comes down to whether or not you guys decide as a collective group that you want to wait on the, on the next four, five, six months. You want to wait on the other villages or you want to just continue to maintain your aggregation. Because I think last year, as I've studied your aggregation, you guys had... Because I think last year, as I've studied your aggregation, you guys had a change in council maybe for the village, is that correct?
Maybe a seat or so.
Because when I say council, I mean legal council for the village.
Oh, yes.
Because when you changed legal council for the village, the new council, your new council of record filed something with the Public Utility Commission introducing themselves as the new council, but there was also a renewal letter of your aggregation, I believe, with that new...
It wouldn't have been like the current.
Happy ending.
Yes, it would have been.
Happy ending.
My only fear of the whole thing is that they're all going to get together, Camden, Lewisburg, and they're all going to have a better run than we will. It doesn't seem likely because they're going to be later into the process than we are, but...
It just...that depends largely on what your optimism is or your skepticism is about what rates do over time, you know?
Yes, yes.
Sometimes they go up, sometimes they go down. We have a lot of things going on right now in our economy that are going to affect our commodity pricing. And historically, again, I don't have a crystal ball, you guys have to make that decision as a group, but historically, when our commodities are affected the way they're being affected right now by natural disasters, the pricing for this kind of stuff doesn't get cheaper in that process.
Jonas, is it three-year?
This is a three-year.
Three-year.
Yeah. And I can get it in two-year and one-year, but it goes up about a tenth of a penny for each smaller increment.
Regardless of what they do, you're getting a better rate than we're getting now.
Yes.
If people want to participate in it, and I know DPL Energy, going off the top of my head, they're for, what, three or four years, over the years of savings, it's like it's over $300,000 of the village has saved at that lower rate that we don't get back then. So, anytime that you can lock in a lower rate, it'll be considered. So, what's council's feelings on this? What would you like to do? We've already signed a contract with him on the commercial end of the village, so now we're talking about the residential side.
And the residential's are up next?
May, right around...
What if you were a resident and decided to switch or didn't do anything and got switched, and you were with the company to have penalty?
That is one of the reasons why all the information goes out to the people. And the information doesn't go out like it's an advertisement. It comes out with your information as a village on it. I mean, it's something that your residents get from the village. I don't believe...I believe the utility company and the supplier sent that out before, but it was a letter that was sent to them with Village of New Paris information on it. It didn't come from...
Right. And that's where you got to read the word because so many people don't read, they consider junk in LA, don't look at it, so they fill it out. Next time, they're hooked up to somebody, and then they want to cancel it, and then there's that cancellation fee. So, they're, you know, through communication and the...that's why you got to have some meetings, like put it out there for people to come and tell them what's going on or what's about to happen, so they got to be aware, looking for that.
It is their option.
It's their option. They don't have to join. They can enter out.
Yeah. They don't have to be a part of it. And public announcement and the letters that you guys sent before, like I say, only about 225 of your meters were actually participating on this, and so, your opt-out letters were two-thirds of your village opted out of it.
Yeah. And DPL Energy took that risk at the time they did it because we was having the streetlight issue where they kept our streetlights burning, and we made the deal on that. So, at that point, we asked them, "Well, you know, what if you get less than 50% participation? Well, we're willing to take that risk." So, they took the risk, we took the deal because it kept our streetlights burning at the time.
They priced accordingly. I mean, they made out fairly because at that point in time, wholesale market was lower than it is now.
Yeah.
I'm for doing, for going ahead. I don't...I agree with John. I mean, in any case scenario, I would say getting better as it goes on.
And the only thing I'll do about it, but there are more participants from other places in the county, and they aggregate, they should get a better deal, but...
If the wholesale rate is higher at that point in time, though, they may only end up with exactly what you've got for a larger number of meters.
And they may not be ready, and they may not do anything.
And they may not do anything at all. There's no way to know if they will. I know that Chris Day and I have talked about me going before the Village of West Alexandria, but the Village of West Alexandria had voted down aggregation before when we started this thing. And it was just because it was very new and they didn't have a good understanding of it. And the other thing is, I don't think they felt like they had somebody locally that they could go to and ask questions of.
Well, back then, nobody's aggregation discussed. Nobody understood how it worked, and they didn't understand it still comes through DPL. DPL still serves your lines. They didn't understand that you can buy off the grid. I mean, this has all been developed in the last 10 years or so. There's a lot more people out there that understands aggregating now than what they used to when it first came out. All right, Jane, your opinion?
I think everybody ought to have the option to choose what they want to do.
Well, they will.
This just gives them an option.
They will.
This is an option that, you know, they all get a better deal than they're getting right now.
Right.
Yeah, they can't...it's a situation where they can't go out as somebody that uses 600 kilowatts of electric a month and get a rate forecasted in the May of 2018 for 600 kilowatts of electric cheaper than what they can get in your aggregate of 2 million kilowatts a year.
Rob?
I think we should go ahead with it.
I would need a motion for that.
So, who?
I'd make a motion that 5.65.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Sasha.
Tess. Kathy. Teresa. So...
Yeah. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
In the meantime, we'll have to...we got a little paper here in town that goes out in the prime...between now and the end of May. We'll try and educate as many as we can to let them know that they have an option to either opt-in or opt-out on this and save themselves some money.
Well, like we did with the previous, I'll have them draft the agreement for the rate. I'll bring it here to the village, and then we'll start the process of preparing everyone for the information.
Joan, I do have one question. If somebody's locked in right now with somebody for another year or six months past that time, can they come to the aggregate?
It depends on if the program that they're in has a cancellation figure on it.
But...
And then, it becomes a matter of economics because sometimes people look at that thing just depending on what they've got, and they say, "Okay, it's on a residential, it's $50 to delete this. Am I going to save $50 on my electric by being in there?"
But if they don't opt-in this May, say they say, "It's not going to be worth it for me because I'm going to pay this big fee if I get out," and keep it until it runs out, their current agreement.
If they opt-out this May, they won't be allowed...they're going to have to opt-out not to be in it, and if they opt-out of it, there won't be an opportunity for them to get back in until the next contract cycle comes, just like the one you have now.
So, it's three years?
So, it's three years, just like the one you have now.
Kind of have to have...I mean, I agree with what we're doing, so the resident office has to have the timing of what they've got going on.
Well, and if they know about it early enough, there should be some people who will...who can hold out and not sign a re-up with somebody else.
Well, there's people calling every day now already. I mean, I'm getting called all day.
But if they don't, then they put you somewhere, you're paying higher prices than you did before.
Right, until you get to the egg.
I'll make this commitment to you guys. If you guys have anybody call here that needs visited about this, I'll go visit anybody who wants to talk about this. I'll go sit down, I'll explain it to them, and I'll help them with the economics on whether they say it or they don't. And quite frankly, I'm one of those people, if I can't help you, I'll tell you I can't help you. A little walk away from me for a better opportunity, and I'll tell you it exists out there. So, if you, you know, I'll meet with your residents from the village in group, and if any of them says, "Hey, I just don't understand this," and Amanda gets a phone call, I'll be glad to meet them down here at the village office and talk to them.
That's what we'll try and do between now and then, and try and get it out there that's open meeting to where you can come in and address these mazes and we can get in the doors.
Because I'll tell you right now, I mean, as a salesperson, I get paid on the aggregation by how many kilowatt-hours actually get used. So, it behooves me to make an effort to try and have as many of the 7 million potential kilowatt-hours that you guys have as a village on this roster as possible. And, you know, and I don't get paid a lot off them, I get paid a little bit off of them, but, you know, this is how I get paid, so it behooves me to participate with you guys and try and help you, help your citizens understand it. But to answer your question, in the residential market, there are not as many programs out there that have cancellation fees with them as there is in the commercial market. So, there's...and the cancellation fees are usually smaller in the residential market than they are in the commercial market. But like Butter Eat Garage and places like that, you know, I've talked with those folks, and they're getting ready to be in a situation where they cycle, and they want to be a part of something like this.
Yeah.
So, it'll help them now.
Okay. John, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We now have, from the city of...well, actually, from CCA, representing the city of Hamilton, Mr. Dennis, and I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name.
It's Berlissia.
Thank you, sir. For your...
Um, can't shut the stand here?
Wherever you'd like to rest, Tom.
All right. I'm from CCA. The CCA is the city of Cleveland. I am a City of Cleveland employee, as are all CCA employees. On October 1st, the certain people from the Hamilton tax department will become CCA employees, and what is now the location of the Hamilton office will become a CCA office. So, just so I understand, it's not an agency, we are another city who is, does what Hamilton did on a much bigger scale. I'm not going to go through the handouts I gave you, you can read. It has a lot more information besides go through it and take over now when you don't read it. CCA was created in 1966 when the city of Cleveland decided that they could take advantage of the economy's scale, and by doing tax work for a number of communities, it would be cheaper than each community doing it themselves because it eliminates the need for every city to have their own SOC where there are lots and everything else. So, for the last 50-plus years, we have been collecting taxes and administering the tax ordinance for what we call member communities. We have been doing...right now, we collect for a population, taxpayers of 1.5 million people, all-sized communities. We mentioned West Alexandria is one of our communities. They're around here, they're not very large. And of course, the city of Cleveland is substantially larger than that, and we do everything in between. We have communities that are at 500 and 600 population all the way down. We operate as a cooperative, which means that the way we calculate the fee for each member community is to track the number of dollars we collect for each community and measure that as a percentage of the money we collect for everybody included, and then we track transactions for a member community and compare the number of transactions for that community as a percentage of all the transactions for all the communities. We then take those two numbers, come up with the average, and that average is then applied to our total operating cost. So that what we simply do is see how much you use our resources, and then we calculate based on that percentage how much of our operating cost should be assigned to you. It's pretty quite complex formula, pretty simple, and based on the information we have with you right now, we would start out with a 5% holdback, which means that we would take, we'll 5% back from every deposit to your community, and by the way, we deposit monthly. It's a direct deposit, and we would hold that back. At the end of the year, after our audit of the agency is completed and we know the actual amount of our audited costs, that's when we calculate the true percentage that each community owes. At no time will you ever write a check to the CCA if it should come out that we did not withhold enough money to cover your expenses. We will adjust the percentage going forward, but we will never tell you that, "Hey, you need to write us a check." What else do we do? We administer your ordinance. You do not have to modify your ordinance to accommodate our collection. Our job is to basically take care of the taxes for your community in the way your community wants them taken care of. You have...your ordinance dictates what your penalties are, what your interest rates are. Your ordinance determines your tax rate, your credits, and everything is still controlled by you. Your rules and regulations remain your rules and regulations. The only thing you need to do is make sure they're in compliance with the state, which they should be no matter what you're doing. I'm sure you all heard about how still 5, and all the changes that have started happening. You need to maintain compliance with that, and if you have any concerns, we will review your ordinance to make sure it's in compliance with the state or master ordinance so that there's something that says...and we have encountered it, where your ordinance is complex. One section says one thing, and another section says another, and it can't be both ways. We pump that out to you and say, "Which way did you really mean to avoid the fact that you might get a lawsuit from somebody who says, 'You're doing it this way, you're saying you shouldn't,' and the taxpayer is trying to get you to do what's best for them instead of what you really intended?" We review your ordinance. We offer a whole slate of services, online filing. We can be ready for it. We file it, send out the tax returns for the people, allow them to file online. They can call in if someone needs help filling out their tax return. We have staff on the phone who will walk somebody line by line right through the tax returns. We do have sent people into the field so that on a given day, we can have somebody come here during tax filing season. We set up in this room, and we would say, "Hey, the third Saturday in March from 10 till 2, we'll have somebody here filling out tax returns for your residents who want to bring it in." Also, if somebody...we have the office, of course, will be in Hamilton, office in Dayton, and if we have people in West Alexandria, if somebody wants on a different Saturday or a different weekday, anybody from any of our communities can go to the other community to have their tax returns done. So that if it was convenient for somebody to drive over here and have their tax return done from another CCA community, our auditor would take care of them while they're sitting here, the same way they would take care of New Paris residents, no matter where we are helping anybody. We have the telephone line, people who can pay online or pay over the phone, we take credit cards. There is no additional fee for credit cards. Your community would receive a pay...would get a community access portal where your designated person can go and check tax records for a resident if they need to. Of course, you realize that the information is confidential so that if you designate this person as the tax administrator and the person who...they can see the information, but it would be criminally...a criminal act to share that information with anybody else in the city administration. That's always been the case in our office. There are things that we do that even the tax commissioner cannot be told about because it would be illegal for us to share that information with the agency. One of the big advantages we have is we do have access to federal tax information so that periodically, every several years, we go through the federal tax records we can collect from the IRS, a list of everybody who has filed a 1040, who has the same ZIP codes in Paris. We then go through that list and eliminate anybody who may be in the ZIP code. then go through that list and eliminate anybody who may be in the zip code that's not actually within the village limits, the different of all those people. Then we next, then remain people against the tax records to see if they filed. If they filed, we take them off the list. The next thing we do is see if they have tax income. If this is a retiree and all they have social security, interest and dividends and a pension, there's nothing taxable here. We don't bother them either. What's left are people who on their federal tax return reported income that is taxable by New Paris. And we will then contact those people and basically say, you need to file a tax return. And if they don't file a tax return, we can then pursue them legally.
And you would do that?
Yes. Well, it gets a little complicated because, um, I'll give you the very short version. Now, the first thing we do is we send out a letter telling them, hey, you know, according to the IRS, you live in New Paris, you have taxable income, you need to file a tax return. Come on in, see us do it. We will then send a second letter. At the point where these people aren't responding, we will then prepare, return tax returns on their behalf, using the information off their 1040. Now, when we do that, we do not give them credit for any taxes withheld anywhere. So if this person lived in, in Paris, worked in Paris, had all the tax withheld, but ignores all the letter, we're going to go out of tax return and not give them credit for the money that was taken out of their paycheck. It's up to them to come to us and say, wait a minute, here's my W-2, I already paid. If they refuse to do that, and after three letters and us contacting, it's not that they don't know, it's because they're refusing to respond. If they refuse to respond, they're not going to get credit for the taxes that they have withheld, and we're going to go after them to pay the full amount. So that's what we do with this. Um, I'm going to stop here and see if you have questions.
Basically, what's taking place here is the city of Hamilton is no longer going to collect our income tax. That's the basic thing. So City of Hamilton is merging with CCA and even though the, I don't remember the guy's name.
Eric.
Eric, that's what City of Hamilton now. He is still going to be working with the new company on our taxes. So the bottom line is, City of Hamilton don't want to do the income thing anymore, but they're partnering with CCA out of Cleveland for them to take care of it. And one of their people that's on the City of Hamilton is going to be on the payroll of CCA or working closely with CCA.
Well, actually, no, there will be two people. Eric may want to-
Well, I didn't know who the other was.
Yeah, I don't, there will be two people and they both will be employees of the city of Cleveland, which is CCA.
But they'll, they'll remain in Hamilton.
They'll physically be there.
To be helping doing what they're doing now. And so basically, what it boils down to is somebody has to do it. And so City of Hamilton is partnering with CCA. The CCA thinks that they can even, right now, we're paying City of Hamilton, um, five thousand, uh, five thousand dollars or 5%. And what Mandy has told me that you're, someone has spoken that we feel like-
They thought it was cheaper, but now it sounds like 5%.
Well, okay. I don't know what the person, you don't have the number of transactions and the number of dollars to do an exact calculation of what, what it would be. So I'm going to tell, give you the higher number. If, you know, if when we do the reconciliation, you have overpaid us, you will get refund check.
We get, oh, we do get a check.
You never give us a check, but we will give you an adjustment check. And then we-
At that time, it would be reevaluated.
Then we reevaluate and let's say that five is way too high and it should be four or three or two or whatever. We will then go back to that number moving forward. And we go through this, think of the budget billing for your, you know, gas and electric.
Yes.
You, you pay a fixed amount. At the end of the year, we figure out what's really there. We adjust the budget amount and we go forward and it happens over here.
And right here, right now, we are getting charged 2% for credit card. He stated we would not be getting charged.
Okay. So I'll say this right here. And of course, you would still withhold a certain percentage for refunds to taxpayers if they-
Oh, well, yeah, refunds come out of your current collection. You know, we, we take in a thousand dollars, we refund a hundred, you get nine hundred minus the whole-
Minus the percentage.
Yes. So that, and if, God forbid, the refund should exceed your entire month's collection, we'll deal with this.
City of Hamilton is retaining 2% now. Is that correct? Is that the same amount as you, yours? Is yours, is yours 5%? Or is 2% as being, uh, right now is being retained in place to separate account to you?
For Hamilton, yes. Right, it's on their numbers. And then again, we'll go through the same process with that. Um, I didn't want to come in here and all obviously a low volume.
Right.
So 5% is the, is the high end. And, you know, basically because it's the end of the year, this co, you know, this coming, uh, at the end of the year in May, when we have the auditors come in and audit the books and figure out what we really spent, um, you're only going to have been in there for a couple of months assuming you start immediately. So that adjustment number is going to be a little wild anyway because it's only for a couple of months out of twelve.
Yeah.
The true calculation of what your refund will not, you, you really know until May of, of 2019, just because of the cycles.
So you were just in the May?
Well, the year ends in, the year end on the calendar. But then you have, just like you, the state auditor comes in.
Collection and all that.
And we audits our books. And after they're audited, that's when we determine what we really spent and what we really took in. So that's what we do.
So that makes sense. We won't have a whole year with you.
Correct.
Until that audit in 2018, 2019.
Yes. So you're really looking way down the pipe now, this.
So basically, we're either going to go with the CCA, partner with Ham, Hamilton, City of Hamilton, or we're going to have, we have to have someone or put someone in place to do it from ourselves. And these people already have all the access to all the paperwork. I think they've got it down to an article, just like City of Hamilton did. So this contract is just the whole.
That's our, that's what-
This existing contract means nothing now that they're changing. Well-
That's just, you know, you don't need what they had.
Yes.
When is it you guys are actually, what's the date?
October 1st.
October 1st.
End of this month.
And really, it's the same cost.
Yeah, well, yes.
Right now, less the fee for credit card collection.
No, there's no collect, there's no credit card.
Well, so that, we've been paying that.
Oh, but you're not going to-
We made that with you.
Correct.
So basically, by now in October, we'll have a new contract signed as of October 1st.
The next couple of steps for you is you need to, of course, just kind of pass a resolution or ordinance, whatever, um, authorized in the city signing of the contract. Um, if some, I can email the contract to you tomorrow and, and sample the resolution if you'd like. Um, after you pass the resolution, you have the signature. I don't know what your timing is on these things.
Well, our next meeting is the second of October.
Well, you need it before that.
We need it, yeah, yeah, we need it.
We don't have to have a special meeting to do the resolution.
But if we have those things.
Yeah, if he says it, then we can have a meeting.
Um, so we can give you an email address, I can, I'll have it to you tomorrow. And the procedure's very simple. You pass the resolution, you sign it. I'm assuming it, it allows you to immediately sign the contract. You mail two copies, two signed copies of the contract to my attention. Then the commissioner will sign both copies and send back an original to you with wet signatures from everybody. So you will have three records in front of you. And then with that authorization, we can get the information from Hamilton to put you into our system and to get everything rolling.
Correct.
Um, it'll be important for you to, um, get it out to your residents. You have a little newspaper and everything else, articles. You'll let them know that CCA is not collecting your taxes. Um, people may think it's a scam, especially, you know, they have no idea who we are. They can get a letter from us saying, hey, we're, send your tax money to us instead of Hamilton. Um, they should justify and maybe interested in checking it out. So, um, and you have my business card. Um, I'm only in the office on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays. I travel, actually, on Mondays and Thursdays, I travel lots of house meetings. So, um, best time to catch me is a Tuesday or a Wednesday. I'm an early bird and you'll be on my cell phone. So if you have any questions, you can call me. And then I can do that with my car, please. So I can have this to you tomorrow.
Okay, you'll send that out to us and we'll, we'll proceed from there and set up and then do what we have to do. But we, I'm assuming we're in agreement that-
Well, I, it's just what we have right now, actually, and it's even a little better.
Yeah.
Without having to pay the fee for credit card collection. So, yes.
We will be able to do things that Hamilton could not because the IRS only shares information with the community, with the population of quarter million or more. Or the agency, because we aggregate all of the populations. We, we serve more than, uh, 250,000 people. Hamilton did not get access because they just simply were not large enough. So we will have access to federal information and that you never, never had access to before.
And nobody here will have access to that.
No.
None of us will know what's going on.
Because we don't have a tax person.
No, so if somebody here didn't pay their taxes, we're not going to know what they're going to take care of.
And if you don't want to have access to that, by, the only thing is, it's nice, oh, by the way, you'll get monthly reports, you know, showing transactions and what's going on and how much money we're depositing and adjustments. And when you get three reports and we'll have questions, you call. We'll say, what's this? And we will have assigned one individual on our staff as a liaison and he just, that will be the person will be responsible for your community. That will be the New Paris person.
Yeah, because you still have an office in Hamilton.
Mm-hmm.
Our people will still be sending it, but not to the city of Hamilton.
They'll, they'll get, everything will go to our offices and we-
Okay, okay.
They're just going to have a person in Hamilton.
Yeah, we drive through Hamilton and tell them to do that.
And so Eric, who we've been dealing with now, will we, will have access to him for questions.
So we're going to have to really get the word out with this stuff needs to-
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
But City of Hamilton is not going to do it anymore, so we, we got to have somebody. And this is good City of Hamilton recommended.
If people continue to mail their checks to Hamilton, will they get, then it'll get scored?
Yes.
We don't catch everybody. That's my, you know, that's, yeah.
It, it might, a couple of years from now, it'll get a little weird if they're making-
Web now.
Contact Hamilton. If they make the check payable in Paris, no problem. Hire the contractor that allows us to cash the check available to you. If the check's payable to Hamilton, the big thing will be we can cash it because Hamilton's one of our communities. But quite, then we're going to have to just make sure that the money belongs to you and not to Hamilton.
Yes. Okay. So get that switched over with all our people, all our residents as soon as possible.
You want to, and you know, we want to, and one of the things we will be, want to talk to somebody here to help us identify the addresses that are on which side of the village limits. So then we can say, you know, okay, I'm going down, I think this is Cherry. What's the last house on Cherry that's inside the village limits? So that because zip code is probably the same, even though-
Yes, it will be.
And so obviously, we don't want you going after these people. So-
They don't live in the village.
Yeah, we want only to get the people. So we will be asking you to help us go through the list and identify who is in New Paris and who is not.
Which gets tricky because if they rent a property that they're making money on, that's in the village.
Well, yeah, but we, we try to track the address.
That's, yes. The address itself will be checked.
So John owns a rental house in New Paris, but he lives in Indiana.
Yeah.
Well, we, we will track him based on the rental house, even though his mailing address may be otherwise. All right. Any other questions?
I don't think so. Okay. Well, thank you, sir. Give that information to Mandy tomorrow, then we'll proceed.
I'll, I'll reach out to you tomorrow, send you the information. And I'll be, I'll be in the office, um, probably that Sunday tomorrow. I'll see you guys right back. I'm not, I'm not getting up early tomorrow. All right. Thank you. I'll take leave. And you guys have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Careful traveling.
Don't forget your bag here, sir.
Thank you.
Basically, City of Hamilton said, we're done, so.
I'm only curious about one thing. Is the 5% compared to 2% we pay Hamilton?
No, we don't.
No, we don't.
Oh, you pay Hamilton 5%?
We pay Hamilton, we pay five thousand dollars.
Or 5%.
Or 5%, whichever is, whichever is great. So we pay them five no matter what. And we may pay them a little bit more or a little bit less.
And from what Eric at Hamilton calculated, equally, the CCA would come in somewhere around 2.8 or 3%. He thinks it's going to be a little bit cheaper for us.
And then if you take the 2% charge on the credit cards, that, that we're being charged now and not going to be charged, it's probably offset based on how many people's paying. I don't have an idea on who pays the credit card. No, but if there's a lot.
That's not only enough.
That could offset some.
That's a couple of bucks.
Yeah. Moving on, safety. Had 113 calls for service, made 27 reports, four arrests, eight citations and 23 warnings. Officer Hamilton is no longer with the department, really in Paris. Officer Stevens, Stevens has been moved to full-time position. All his tests has come back and, uh, and completed. He passed everything. So he is now official, uh, full-time with the village. Uh, we have a request, uh, for a contract for $995 that we need to pay. That's, that's what it cost us to have the testing done. I would be emotion to pay that, please. Motion made. Roll call, please.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Sasha.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Theresa.
Yes.
All officers have completed, completed their yearly firearms qualifications. Uh, we had a computer issue next door with, uh, one of the computers in the police department. Uh, they were able to, uh, get that taken care of by backing it up. And they had somebody come to work on our tech stuff that took care of it without having to buy a new computer. So they got that issue taken care of. Uh, for those that don't, uh, was not aware, uh, we had an accident with a new cruiser Saturday, September 2nd. Officers were on their way to the firearms qualification. Uh, the driver was to pass the driveway, hit the brakes on a red road, scooted off the road, struck a tree. So, uh, someone was hurt. Cruiser took a little beat up, sent to body shop now. Um, right now, the estimate from Wenzels is 5817, and that's just an estimate on the outside. They've still got it, once they get started, uh, you know, that could go up a little bit. But because it's over $5,000, we got to wait on the adjuster to get here to take a look at the car authorized by the insurance company. Want to go ahead and start fixing the cruiser?
Did you check the armed adult law on that?
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
Was there just one estimate they had that?
Yeah, according to insurance company, correct. Yeah. So we took it to Wenzel. It was the closest. They said, if they get to go ahead, they could do it in-
As soon as we get to go ahead from you to us, we can take it over there.
Yeah, I think they told you like-
Couple days.
Yeah, maybe seven, eight days, get it back, ten days. So.
I have another question I want to ask about. You said the, the testing, uh, which officer was it? The, the Stevens? Does the police department in the testing are any, at any time, are they required to take a psychological test with the-
That's part of the, this is.
Okay.
Yeah. We got to take physical, psych test, all kinds of testing before they get certified.
It's when they switch from part time to Ohio police and fire. That's who makes them-
Okay, that's test. Yes. Well, I think they need to have that done whether they're with police and fire or not. Cause we've had incidents before it was needed.
That's mandatory through, uh, Ohio that you have to take these tests.
Okay.
Uh, the other, the chief's cruiser, uh, broke down- The other, the chief's cruiser broke down the same weekend or a couple of days later. The timing belt broke on, and the one that Jeremy drives. And I guess Chrysler has a problem with these engines. When the timing, timing belt breaks, the pistons go up and slams the heads and locks them up. So, basically, we have a patrol car that's got a junk engine in it right now. So, that's the end of the safety report. But counsel needs to have a conversation as to whether they want to do anything with this other cruiser, Ralph. Do you have any suggestions for...
I'd like to pursue, if we could, to try to purchase another one like the order should be, if possible. Even if we have to go as far as borrowing the money to get it, whatever we do.
Yeah, we're paying on it still.
Pardon?
We're paying on it now, we did borrow the money, but didn't wait.
Yes, that's the newest one, yes.
It, Mandy brought to my attention, somebody I think had said something to you, might want to check with your Madison. They have an Explorer.
Okay, I wouldn't know where that is.
No, I know, no, but I don't know, he just said today, it just came up today. And they're planning, I think, to sell those vehicles. Now, I have no idea how old it is, but...
It's not very old, they lost their levy up here, so they got a vehicle.
I think they got it right before they lost the levy.
Yeah, it's not very old, it's probably about, it may be a year old, maybe not. Just to give you some ideas, to replace the one with that engine right now, it's $1,935 for a used engine with 115,000 miles and six months warning. It's 2,145, six months warning, parts of labor. And one used engine was 2285, 12,000 parts of labor. And then to re, to put a rebuilt engine in the cruiser, that's, that's down, it's $4,309 plus another $1,300 in labor to put it in, so you're looking at $5,600 to put an engine in the cruiser that we have now. That cruiser now has 125,000 miles on it, and they've been having some issues with it. They've replaced the fuel pump, the alternator, things that been fixed, not like that. Still needs to fix the front right side of the cruiser, needs work done, it makes a knocking sound when you get a bump. And this was something that was pointed out by Bud Reeves this past week also. The lights, illumination, the illustration clusters are slowly going out. In other words, you can hardly see the speedometer or odometers. Both these issues have been going on over the past three years, so... Cruiser that locked up is getting some age on it. It's 2010, I think, 2010, if it was.
I'm thinking that Madison will have to put it bid.
That's what I think.
Yeah, and so if we know anybody up there we can kind of talk to and see if that's indeed the case, that they are going to bid it out.
Right now, to get the safe, to get a new cruiser, to get a new cruiser like the one we have, is, it would be $39,349.
Now, and then didn't we have to pay over and above to get the radio equipment and all that put in it? And the one we bought, the new one?
Our loan was for $38,000, and that covered everything.
It covered the radio equipment?
That one, the current one we have that...
Kathy, I don't remember about the radio equipment.
Remember, it took a while to even get that.
I don't remember, they come specked out for police departments and, whether, now, whether, well, what we, what we have in the cruiser now, is that transferable, I don't know, I can't answer that question. I don't know, the chief's not here to answer the question for us, so I can't answer that question. Of course, the other thing is, you know, we, we do still have two cars. But one of them broke down right now, so we're operating on one cruiser vehicle right now. So, just informing counsel as to what's taking place with the police department vehicles.
Mandy, can you, can you check with the Madison clerk up there to see if there's a due date on the bid time?
If they are going to do that, I can...
Do I need to have a motion, or can we go ahead and do that for the safety department? I think we can do that. The only thing that we probably, probably need to consider is whether we want to take a motion on whether we want to fix the old charter, or whether we will just, or we just want to sit on it. I don't think we have to have a motion, we just want to sit on it and see what we come up with before we make a, this is discussions to tell everybody what's going on, so...
I would rather wait and see.
I don't think your decision has to be made tonight, you being made aware of what the issues are.
I just rather wait and see what we have, and if we're trying to...
I'd like to replace it as best I can, but all possible.
Yeah.
All car.
Because of the issues that we've had in the past, and several of them are reoccurring, especially electrical systems. There was crazy...
Yeah, we don't know how many alternators we put in that thing, we put...
We put in, I think, three in residence.
Yeah.
Some of them were within months of each other.
You and Chrysler, knowing that they had this issue with these engines, at the time it got broken, it blows them up, you could thought they were going to extend the warranty or notify you or something after. There's a whole lot of Dodge charter police cars after it happened.
Also, also while we're on that subject, the chief did ask me about going ahead and changing the timing belt that's on the existing cruiser that's operable, that falls under the same problem.
Yes, yes.
So that we may be able to get a jump start on it, but we can't do that until at least one of the other of us replaced, because we're down with the only one we have. If it goes into service for a timing change, just for preventative maintenance purposes, then we don't have any cruiser at all. So, what I'd like to do is tell counsel that if we get another cruiser, immediately after we get two cruisers back on the road, we'll take the one that we have now and try to...
What the cost on replacing that belt, on some of that stuff that Rick had too? I mean, I, we'll talk about some of his numbers, it wasn't that...
I don't know what the, to you, Mandy, you know what the charge was to put the timing belt on and found out it was junk? And there's no way to know until you put the timing belt on.
No, I don't.
They had to spend the money, I do not know off the top of my head.
I was thinking of like $600.
I, I don't have that, I'm sorry.
That, that sounds pretty reasonable for that, yeah.
We did some internet research and it sounded like that was about what we were on right now.
You're looking at about $10 worth of labor plus parts.
Yeah.
So, if we could prevent that from happening to the little cruiser that we have left, it might be a good idea.
Which I don't know, they might be able to take the timing belt that they just put on to see if it's junked or not, or not.
I have no idea if they'd be making one with it.
It should be, if it's the same engine, yeah. We can look into that, it'll be a good idea.
What I would need from counsel is a motion to proceed with allowing the Wenzels body shop to go ahead and fix the vehicle once the adjuster gets it still. Motion made.
On second.
Roll call, please.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Sasha, Kathy?
Yes.
Theresa?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes. That's all I have on the safety, I think, Ralph, Kathy, do you have any else?
No, not really.
Building?
I do not have anything.
Okay. Streets, Jimmy's been working on the streets today or yesterday, I believe it was. He's got some stuff there through the... Yeah, yeah. You want me to do this, Ralph, do you want to do it, if you want to? See if they're going to turn around. All right, so what happened is we, you know, we've, we've sealed around a lot of the patches that we've done, and it cost us about a dollar and six cents for the material to do that. So, what we did, we, the township has a crew that they use for all their township roads for, for polishing the cracks. So, we called them and had them come in and give us a proposal and what it take to finish some of the streets here in the town that's getting in bad shape, a lot of cracks. If we don't do something, we're going to restart the whole street pretty quickly. So, they had, they gave us two quotes. One of the polymers they was going to use is a dollar twenty a pound, and the second one was a dollar fifteen. And so, there's a nickel difference, and they said the one for a buck twenty is a lot better than the other one. They give us an estimate for Main, on Main Street, water to Washington, crack seal 1,200 feet. $1,380 on that street. Walnut Street, from Washington to Pheasant Circle, 3,000 feet, or 3,000 pound, $3,450. Spring Street North, Cherry to New Paris El Dorado, crack seal 4,000 pound, $4,600. Spring Street South, Cherry, Lena Road, crack seal 3,400 pounds, $3,910. Total would be $13,924 for the higher polymer or $13,340 for the less polymer. So, your $600 differs from the best on the market to the second. I don't know what counsel would like to do with this. You know, work on guaranteeing jobs, satisfaction, fully covered workers' comps, have public liability, probably damage insurance payments to be made full within 30 days after invoicing. Service charge will be on any unpaid accounts 30 days after invoicing. This bid is good for 30 days.
Well, I can't see letting these streets go, it's too hard to get the money together to get them paid. This is relatively an expensive save if you ask me.
This money would have to come from the general fund, the street department does not have this much money in it, so it would have to come out of the general fund. If counsel so chooses to do it.
We have a motion, Mandy's up to contend, please, we do have the money in the report. If we find that we need that money, put that in there. The only thing I can think of is that we'll stop for two months, move in the money over to the street department, grant match. I think, you know, I wanted it to be going in there every month because I wanted that, this one Cherry Street, take it there. So that when we, then we can start on that bridge. Because there is no way that we are ever going to be able to replace that bridge unless we do it with the, with the state.
Yeah.
It's not going to happen. But I, I think we can make it up if we drop two months of it. And I don't know that it would be necessary, but if it were, we could rescind that for two months, or put a stop on it.
Well, if you drive down there and look at them, you're going to have to do something, because the walnut is split all the way up the middle, so it's spring down.
I see that here.
If we don't seal it, and winter gets, air water gets started, you're going to end up in the...
Yeah, we are.
And time is a, is a critical right now because of this time of year, trying to get it done.
Is there any way we can, you know, I hate for them to be doing it at Apple Fest, is the only thing I'm worried about. And I, I know that, but we've got...
I don't know, I don't know, Jimmy talked with these folks, I don't know how quickly they could start it. Possibly they could have it done before Apple Fest.
Well, maybe if they're, if they're...
Jimmy says it'll only be about a day and a half to them to do it, or it'll take us a month to do it.
Sure would.
Plus, it, it doesn't cost us more money for us to do it from Hamilton.
They might be willing to go through and not doing it on a three-day...
Well, I'm sure they would be, so, yeah. Mandy, Kathy, are you comfortable with the $13,000?
I'm comfortable with the higher bid, it's going to be better stuff, skating armor, yes. I mean, I am, I, I think we have it, and as I said, if we find that we're running short, just stop those transfers for a couple of months. And I think we can make that up. It's all not going to be due, it would be, whenever we, that rent starts, we can make it up.
I make a motion that we should repair these streets with higher...
GNA construction.
To GNA construction at the $13,920 estimate of the better material. And hopefully, we can get it done ASAP.
On second.
Roll call, please.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Sasha, Kathy?
Yes.
Theresa?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes. Lights?
No, but I'll kind of go around and check.
There are, there are some out, but I haven't got the numbers on them.
Do you?
Finances? Sanitation, Mary Jane?
I did have sent out several letters, I don't remember when now.
But then you were our last meeting, if you would...
Okay.
Because I remember.
And I have not followed up with that, but I will. And also, I, I need to get, and I think Kathy will go with me to talk to the attorney about some changes in procedures. We also need to talk with Jeremy about procedures and going to court, because he's not done it before. Chris Driver always took care of it before. So, we need to get the attorney and, and come up with a procedure that, that Jeremy can go by, because they don't let me go to court myself. It's always the police chief that's done it before.
Well, because it's illegal.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not the one that can tell me no, we're to the prosecutor, the chief has to do that. So, we need to sit down and get a, get some procedures, and we're, we're going to look on updating the ordinances and making some changes.
I'm not so sure that it's, it's a bad idea to, if all they're going to do is find people, and they're not going to make them do the work, I don't know if there's some way we can...
Yeah, I want, that's what I wanted to talk to the attorney about, because I get so sick. It's just a big waste of time sending these letters. We need some kind of a backbone to get it done.
If we can't get it in the ordinance where they have to clean up their mess, then we should...
Myself, I like, there are so many days you have to give everybody. After those days, I just would rather hire somebody to go in there, but then again, that's another procedure, including the police department and all, to get on other people's property.
That's the part, not that's bad.
That's the biggest problem, people won't let you on their property.
But I do think, if, if all they're going to do is make them pay a fine, we should build in there if it's not cleaned up within a week, or whatever the court date is.
It's 10 days, it's in our ordinance now.
If it's 10 days, after they've filed that.
And then there's our final notice of another 10 days.
Now, it's like, what I'm talking about is that the court isn't like that.
Okay.
Then I think we should.
That is another longer on that process too, because the court, this is nothing to them. The sanitation thing, and they put you on hold, and it takes forever, sometimes a year before anything's done. It's just really frustrating, things not getting done. But I need to know of the legal way of changing things to make, try to enforce it more.
Okay, Mary Jane, you have to stop the meeting, see what you can get done. The process is that when you, when you can find them, it's like the one thing, you assess them, then it takes you forever to get your money back, once you have the money, you have it probably done, so...
And the money is not, it's not property cleaned up.
It's not cleaned up.
But I'm just saying, you bring somebody in, and you got to pay that person to take care of it, and then you got to wait on your money to do assessments to get that money back. So, it's a complicated circle.
It is a complicated circle, and you have to...
It's not a, you said, banking ability.
Make sure that property owner realizes that assessment's going to go on their taxes, or they won't enforce it.
And it takes you years to get your money back off the assessment.
Even, I do assess properties, but like you said, it takes forever to get the money back.
And that's not fixing what?
No, it's not.
Then they let it go again, and you're doing it all.
Planning, I don't have anything, VPA, Ed, you got anything?
No, I don't have any.
All right. We have a resolution here that we do every year for the budget conditions, and we'll do this in... do this in title only, this, we do this every year for the resolutions for the commissioners down there. Resolution number 2017-10, resolution except the amount of rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Would need a motion that we accept resolution 2017-10, please.
I would be accepted. We all want to...
Roll call, please.
I, who's second of that.
I seconded, I think Ralph maybe made motion.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Sasha?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Theresa?
Yes.
Yes. I need a motion for real, the three reading rule passes emergency, please.
So, move.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Sasha?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes. Old business, anybody anything? New business, I don't know anything. Next. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me, sir.
It, it's far down the road, but the fire department has informed me that the Central Bus Department's Association, three-day convention, if it's three days or two days, will be held on July 21st to 18th. So if this, but everybody can go ahead, some more information to come. Streets that they would request would be blocked off, would be sprained by the school, the park up there, that may be part of Main, maybe not necessary with Main, but it's an option depending on how many get show up. There'll be vendors and all kinds of activities up there, event parades and so forth and so on, but they're asking for the village's assistance, whatever it might be.
I think they've already asked, didn't they?
Yeah, they did earlier, but I just was touching base again.
Okay.
I got a date today.
Okay.
Before I didn't have a date, but now I got a date, so.
Okay. July the 21st.
21st, on the weekend.
All right. Trick or treat. What does counsel want to do about trick or treat, man? Do you want to do it on the same night as Richmond, as we've done in the past?
Yeah, whatever that way will be, it can.
Halloween gone, too, by the way.
So we need a motion to do it on the same night as Richmond, whenever we find out that date is. Motion made.
Second.
Roll call.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Theresa?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes. All right. I'm sorry.
Nothing trick or treat already.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah, well, we want to pick the leaves up. We do have now, that's coming up everybody, so I hope everybody enjoys that. Next meeting will be October 2nd, 2017, 7:00 p.m. I need a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.